Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. I think our normal packed house is probably down at Taste of Canton tonight, where my colleagues and I this evening will have a taste of public service instead, I guess. But if you would please stand, if you're able, and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, or remain standing for the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Yon?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, as we enter this season of hopeful change in the Middle East, please let the peace that has started grow and become permanent. And as we do go about the people's business here in Canton, let us use the wisdom that you have granted us and make the proper decisions for our citizens. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Let's call to order our October 16th meeting of the mayor and council. We'll begin with a consideration to approve tonight's agenda. Are there any changes, revisions?
Mayor, can we add an executive session to discuss litigation?
Okay. Any other changes, revisions, or motions?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. You have in your packet our draft minutes for our council meeting on October 2nd, 2025. Are there any changes, revisions, or motions?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. We have two informational items this evening. These are for upcoming cases. This is just for your information only. There will be no discussion. We'll begin with item A. Again, information only. Cases ANNX 2509-002, RZON 2509-001, MP 2509-005, and CUP 2509-004, and VAR 2509-001. Request to annex and rezone plus or minus 48.21 acres for the purpose of developing a residential subdivision consisting of single-family detached homes, townhomes, and cottage-style residential units along Ball Ground Highway. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Pastor Mayor stated this is an application for the annexation, rezoning, master plan approval, conditional use permit approval, and a requested concurrent variance for the 48.21 acres located in between Ball Ground Highway and Faycon Road. The applicant is seeking to construct a 96 single-family detached homes, 77 townhomes, 21 cottage-style residences. Along with the residential portion, the applicant seeks approval of 1.55 acres of commercial area along Highway 5 and 7.85 acres of commercial light industrial property off of Faycon Road. A concurrent variance has also been submitted, seeking relief of the 50-foot buffer that's required when property within the city of Canton abuts property in unincorporated Cherokee County. The proposed number of residential units requires two means of ingress egress to the development. The applicant's site plan shows those two means. However, the fire marshal has determined that those will not be sufficient to meet the fire code. So the submitted site plan will have to be altered somehow in order to meet Mr. Coolidge's requirements for the fire code. And that will be heard on November 6th at the public hearings. My understanding that Cherokee County has this on their agenda for the annexation next Tuesday.
Okay. So the public hearing on those cases on our next council meeting, November 6th. Item B, information only again. Cases ANNX 2509-003 and RZON 2509-008. Request to annex and rezone plus or minus 4.5 acres for the purpose of developing a single-family detached subdivision along Faycon Road. Mr. Green?
Again, thank you. This applicant has submitted applications for annexation and rezoning of 4.85 acres to construct a single-family detached subdivision. They've also requested a concurrent variance to reduce the buffer when, if the property is annexed, abuts property in unincorporated Cherokee County from the required 50-foot And again, this property or this application is on the Cherokee County Commissioner's agenda, from my understanding, for next Tuesday. The public hearing for this will be on November the 6th.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. Any announcements this evening? Now, we'll move into our 10-minute public input. Just as a reminder, it's a 10-minute total for everyone signed up to speak. It's a monologue, not a dialogue. And when I call your name, please come forward, state your name and address. And we have one resident signed up to speak, Frank Torino.
I'm Frank Torino, 145 Hidden Lake Circle. I've come to talk about the property at 160 Prominence Point Parkway. So I think we've been done a disservice with, I don't know how you guys approve these things, but you have a extended stay motel, Wood Springs Suites, being built next to a childcare center. I have a child in the city. I live in South Canton. And not only does it have implications for the safety of these children, I'm sure your officers can attest, extended stay hotels are known crime hotspots. They're known drug hotspots. They have AC units hanging out of the windows like it's 1950, and it's got yellow siding. So my property value, right, is now going to be dictated off this eyesore right on Prominence Point Parkway. So when you guys approve these things, I don't know if you street view it, I don't know if you go out and look at it, but how you approved this motel next to a childcare center is despicable. All right? And not only do we have those problems, we already have police chases and stuff down Prominence Point Parkway. We have a lot of problems in South Canton, and you adding this is just, everybody is not having it. And we're going to start gathering the residents down there, down Prominence Point Parkway, which there's a lot of us, and you're going to start hearing us. I'm the first one. I'm coming to represent everybody because we've been forgotten. All right? Well, you guys have campaign slogans about smaller government and all these things. Look, I'm a conservative, like some of you are. None of that matters if I don't have safety for my child. None of your little downtown development projects affect me in South Canton. What affects me is an extended stay motel right next to a childcare center. All right? It's right in front of the publics. So now, my property value, right, I'm going to be affected forever. It may never recover. Right? And then Ash Street, where I live down, there's no sidewalks, and you guys just approved a heavy equipment parking spot where they can't put built fixed structures. And so now you're going to have heavy equipment pulling onto Ash Street, which is already a high-speed road because it's between two cities. So the officers, you know, it gets cut up between Holly Springs and Canton, so they don't police it. So now you have heavy equipment, we've got extended stay motels raising crime, and I feel like South Canton's been forgotten about. I never cared about a city council meeting. I'd never been to one of these. But I own a property in this city, and when you start allowing transient people in, like extended stay motels, all of a sudden you have kids next to people who come and go for a couple of weeks, couple of months. Does that sound smart when it's your child being abducted? You might not know when you live in your fancy neighborhood off 20 by the lake, or you live up here in some million-dollar mansion, but us people who bought a house down there were affected by these things. And so I come here to say that it's unacceptable, and the future is not with all these slogans on your signs out there. The future is real change, all right? So just know, there are people gathering down there, and whoever is in charge of the, if that's a third ward, you know, we know we've been forgotten, and we're coming for that seat. So somebody else can be sitting there soon. I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Torino. We have two items on our consent agenda this evening. As usual, I will read both items. If anyone would like one or both removed for further discussion, please let me know. Item A, approval of new ordinance under Chapter 42, public safety to codify the mandatory use of the Bryser Compliance Engine. And then item B, approval of sewer credit requests from Northside Hospital. Anyone like either of those items removed? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. Moving to old business. Item A, discussion and possible action on South Canton Park project. Mr. Hooper?
Good evening. Tonight, we have the contract for the construction of the South Canton Park. Both staff and our engineers at TSW have checked the references and bids on all the bidders. Staff is recommending diversify construction of Georgia with a contract amount of 7.6 million with a $500,000 owner's allowance. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Appreciate the hard work that's gone into this. Certainly excited about the first park in South Canton. Just as a reminder, funding for this park, we have a $2.2 million grant from the state, I believe, and also impact fees and splosts. And then the water portion would be under water and sewer, correct?
Yeah, there was a portion of the wall that was split between that project and the water tank project that would require some water funds, water and sewer funds.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hooper? I also just want to remind for the public record, because I keep having questions about the dog park, and when are we going to start the dog park, which is one of the top priorities in our roadmap for success for our citizens. And South Canton Park includes, say, the art dog park with runs for both large and small dogs, so just so everyone can be reminded of that. Yes, Mr. George?
On the bids that we have with the discrepancies from 7.6 to up to 12, taking the low bid that we're taking, you know, what happens if they come back and they need, you know, there's change orders and so on and so forth, and, you know, we get into a situation where we end up paying a lot more than that? I mean, I'm uncomfortable with the dollar amount on this park, just because I just, I just don't see if, how big of a discrepancy can be in the bids.
Right.
And it's just a concern of mine, because I've seen it, we saw it with Harmon. I mean, you know, you do this and it keeps increasing, and then like I was there to see a ballgame and I couldn't find a parking spot. So we didn't have enough parking, you know, for that particular, at least that evening. And are we going to be in that same situation here? I know there's not going to be, you know, ball fields, per se, but, I mean, there could be parties or whatever where people are kind of coming in and out. And I'm, it's just a concern of mine to have such discrepancies in the bid and going with the low bid. I understand if we vetted them, that's great, but, you know, I'm just not familiar with them. I don't know what other projects they've done.
Yeah, I wasn't familiar with them either, to be honest, but we did call, I think it was four different references. One was the DNR, and they gave us a couple of feedback items, and we discussed those with amongst ourselves and with TSW, our engineers. We feel like we added things into the contract that would slow those change orders and things down, or at least give accountability for them, making them in writing, you know, in such notice. One of the things that we got from them was they had built in a lot of rain days in a certain project, so we have it in here. Those have to be brought to us upfront for credit for the rain days on the timeline. The only, the only change orders I could really foresee in this project, if I was being honest, would be unforeseen site conditions, rock.
Sure.
But they did do a lot of legwork with TSW and drilling and things like that on the project, so I feel confident that what they found is what they are, you know, comfortable with pricing. And then some of the materials, I mean, there are some playground materials that are some exotic woods and things like that. They may not be that exotic, but I don't know how much that might affect if somebody can't find them, you know, the proper ones. I would almost think it'd be cheaper if they went that route, but that's about all we can do with that, to monitor that.
And then lastly, I guess, there'll be a 2% of the total park project, correct? The capital project that will go to the arts, correct?
Yes, that was.
That will, we can use some of that fund towards playground equipment and other items like that.
Yeah, and I know that the art is not designed, but the plans do show certain sections that are set aside for art projects and installations, where they'll do things like run power to those areas for lighting and things like that. But yeah, as far as the funding goes, I believe that's right.
Well, one other thing that we did is the bid that were turned in by all the bidders did not include an owner's allowance. So the city's response was that we would add an owner's allowance after the bids, and it would be the same amount for any vendor bidder. And the idea behind that was to curb change orders through that owner's allowance. So that should fall into side items, rock, or anything like that.
And I do believe we are obligated to go with the low bidder, right? Correct?
Outside of extraordinary circumstances, and we, the research that we did, we only had one that had a few little concerns, but they were things that we could build into the contract. Everybody else gave them good reviews, so, good recommendations.
Mr. Waterman?
So basically, you know, the way that the contract is structured, you think you've built in enough to mitigate any scope creep or any, you know, change order or anything that can potentially skyrocket the cost other than what we think, what we've agreed to?
Yes, to the best of the information we've been given, yes. We feel like we've built that in. That's, that's all I, all we, we took the information we got from the feedback, from the other references, and tried to build those things into the contract to slow those change orders as much as possible.
And you said one of the references was DNR, assuming maybe the others were other municipalities?
I think, don't quote me on this, but I think one was DeKalb County, and they gave a really good reference, so. And there was another company, PB's R or something, I could send you that information, but we did reach out to them, they gave us a great review on them, a reference.
I believe you said there were total four references, right?
Yes, that was what we were given.
So this is a question for you, Mr. Hooper, but it may include Mr. Ingram or Mr. Peppers. So when we do a capital project where there is a 2% set aside for art, in this case, it would be roughly 152,000 and some change, is that right? So 2% of 7.6 million? Is that correct? Is my math right there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, but the 7.634212, is that the actual bid from the proposed winning bid?
Yes.
Is that from the company? So where does the, where does 152,684 come from?
Yeah, he's asking about art installation. Where does that money come from? Where does it, where will it come from?
I think he's asking, is the 2% contribution for art, is that in addition to that price, or is that price inclusive of the 2%?
Oh, it would be in addition.
Okay.
So the cost of the project?
But that could also be included as part of the 500,000 owner's allowance?
Uh, we could use 2%, we could use part of the owner's allowance for that 2%, absolutely.
Okay, all right, okay, good. Didn't want to complicate things, but I've just been thinking about that this week. Thank you.
Mr. Yon?
Yes, given that there was such a spread on the bids, was the high bid an outlier and the rest of them fairly close together?
Yeah, actually, it was. I have it somewhere here. I mean, it was up there. We had 7, 6, 7, 7, 8, 3, 8, 7, 9, 9, 5, 10, 4, and 12, right at 12 million. So yeah, I mean, they were mostly in that 8 million, 8.5 range.
As far as the future change orders, and I see that number and it's 7.634 million, I don't know a whole lot about building parks, but that just seems like an awful large number to me. And I guess my question would be, they get out there and they start building, they run in the rocks, we're almost forced to accept that change order because what are you going to do?
I guess the engineering company could come up with something to back off of other amenities that the park offers, if that's what we decided to do at that point. That'd be my only thought. Billy, do you agree with that?
I mean, ultimately, the city bought the land down there to build a park on, and so staff went out, hired an engineer to come up with the development plans to build a park, and then went out to get contracts, see how much it would take to build that park that was vetted by the citizens and the council. So the amount you spend on it is what you're spending for your wish list. So if council's not happy with the amount, then council would need to change the wish list.
Yeah, that's sort of based on, you know, the approved designs that we all reviewed and proved. And again, it is inclusive of the dog park and, you know, I think world-class amenities there. And again, 2.2 million of that total is from a state grant, so that certainly helps. I mean, all the contracts we approve are subject to change orders. I mean, I don't know that we ever had any project, hasn't had any change orders, but, I mean, we can never anticipate those, but I know that staff did vet a lot of, based on the references, to try to mitigate any potential, you know, change orders that we could control up front, so. Mr. Waterman?
I think, Mr. Mayor, as you've said, yeah, we've approved designs, we've approved, you know, the concept. Mr. Hoover, you've mentioned that there are things in the contract that should hopefully mitigate any type of overage, but yes, any, anything that we have approved, any type of project is going to be susceptible to change orders. What I just want to make sure is that, and I put my faith in the contracts, so if there are, you know, as I've seen, if there's things in the contract that mitigate that risk of increasing, then I think I'm okay with it, and this is something that the residents want. I would ask, if, you know, if this is approved, once we start, that we keep track. If we have agreed for X, you know, 7, 7, 1 or so, I'd like to see a performance, you know, forecast to actuals type deal where, you know, and this is also tracking this particular vendor in terms of what they promised versus what they delivered.
So one thing on that, Mr. Waterman, is that your construction management team is required to keep up with those monthly pay apps, approve those monthly pay apps, submit those to the city with the approval that they meet the schedule and they meet the cost before the city cuts check. Additionally, I would mention that when the engineering report came back in March, the cost estimated by the engineers at the time were 7.9 million dollars. So the low bid is within range of what the original construction estimate was on the project.
Understood. I would just, I would be more comfortable, which, which I do, you know, every day is like, I want to see that performance. So if it's a report that's, that's normal, that's regularly occurring, you know, for my sanity.
Adam and I can come in as often as you want for updates and send out reports, whatever we need to do.
And we can also track the percentage costs and time on the monthly reports that we see.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be anything, you know, anything special. I don't need to see them here, you know, every month, but if there's a, there's a report that you're keeping track of.
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, this is something that, you know, our residents want. I want to make sure that we kind of stick to it, to what we've committed, so.
Certainly, it is, it is a large investment, and parks, you know, are not cheap and probably getting more expensive every day. And I know this one, we have kind of world-class equipment and amenities, and I think it's something to be very proud of when it is done, but certainly keeping a track of that. And city manager does an operational report every month, and so we could add that as a line item, that would be, that'd be great, so we can keep track of that. So can we also report back to the residents the progress on the park as well, so? Mr. Waterman?
With that, I would like to make a motion to approve the South Canton Park project.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Nay.
Okay. Let's do a roll call. Mr. Yon?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Nay.
Okay. Mr. Olin?
Yay.
Mr. Waterman?
Yay.
Mr. Roach, nay?
Nay.
Ms. McGrew?
Yay.
Motion carries. Booked forward to two. Thank you. Item B, discussion and possible action on TSW contract amendment for construction administration services for the South Canton Park project.
This was just separated out from the stuff we talked about last week. I mentioned it. It's $101,000 for TSW to administer the construction oversight.
This construction oversight is just what the city manager?
Yeah, exactly.
Review, they'll be tracking and the project and reporting back on that. Any questions?
This is just switching them basically from engineering into administration.
Yeah, or anything, if they run into an issue, they would be the engineer, you know, on staff to change anything.
Any further questions, comments?
If there are no questions, I'll make a motion to approve the contract amendment to TSW for construction administration services for the South Canton Park project.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Nay.
Okay. If I got that correctly, we have the same vote, four yeses and two nays, so the motion carries. Item C, discussion and possible action on resolution authorizing the execution of the intergovernmental contract relating to the Canton Building Authority Revenue Bond Series 2025 and for other related purposes. Mr. Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Please recall that at our previous meeting, we went over a presentation regarding the potential financing of the downtown fire station renovation. For the record, I'll remind everyone that back in September, Davenport Company, along with staff, city staff, brought forth a plan of finance to renovate and construct a fire station in the downtown at approximately a cost of totaling $8 million. As part of that $8 million, we have about $2.2 million of fire impact fees on hand, so we're interested or we're pursuing a finance of a little bit less than $6 million for the project. Based on the details of the financing, bond counsel, which is Murray Barnes and Finister, recommended to secure financing through the Canton Building Authority. If you recall, we were going to have the DDA transfer the property ownership to the CBA so that the CBA could execute the financing. I will, I would, I'm glad to tell the council that just earlier, the CBA did approve the resolution to Um, I will, I, I would, uh, I'm glad to tell the council that just earlier, the C B A did approve the resolution, uh, to, to move forward with this financing. And now this, uh, it's in front of you to approve the resolution and the intergovernmental contract. That intergovernmental contract is between the city and the C B A for this financing. On September twenty-fourth, Davenport, uh, distributed a request for proposals to financial, to financial institutions for this issue. On October ninth, we received five proposals. And I am, uh, pleased to announce that the most responsive proposal was from Sanovis Bank, from our local financial institution that, that handles a lot of the finances for the city. They came back and proposed a twenty-year note, uh, at four point one eight percent. If you recall, our original estimates were five percent. Yes, that was a conservative estimate, but we still, at least internally discussing among ourselves, were expecting fi, uh, four and a half, you know, somewhere in the mid fours, upper fours. So, they brought back four point one eight percent, and they had no call restrictions on that as well. That will afford us the opportunity to pay that debt off early, should we have the ability to do so. I know in, uh, with us tonight is, uh, Mr. Klein and Ms. Michelle Knowles with Sanovis. We appreciate their, uh, support and their investment in our community. I'm very, uh, pleased, uh, to know that Sanovis is going to be our partner in this project and seeing the downtown renovated in that fire station. It's been sitting too long, uh, in decay, and it's going to be good to see that that being used again, uh, for fire support in our downtown area. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those or, or get a answer to you. Appreciate Mr. Luckett and his, uh, work on this issue as well, but, uh, we're here to answer any questions. But if you have none, we're going to ask that that resolution, uh, approving the financing and the intergovernmental contract, the council considered passing. Forward with that and get an issue hopefully on no.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. I want to echo your, uh, comments, uh, thanking Sanovis for their support of this project and investment in our community. We appreciate that and, uh, especially for the great rate, uh, that's much better than we expected with no prepayment penalty. And, uh, just as a reminder to council and to the public that, um, you know, we collect the impact fees, uh, the county does, from city residents for fire services. However, prior to this project, we didn't have those necessarily dedicated to any particular city project. However, going forward, they would be dedicated to the downtown fire station exclusively as part of our I G A, correct?
That is correct, Mayor. And, and I'll also add that, to reiterate, that only fire impact fees will be used to pay this debt off. And again, that twenty-year note, uh, for the first three years, we're paying interest only. It'll afford us a little bit of, a little bit of an opportunity to accumulate some of those fire impact fees during the first three years, so that we can assure ourselves that impact fees only will be used to pay off this debt.
Correct, so collecting those interest only the first three years allows impact fees to continue to build up, uh, which we already have two point two million in there, uh, to pay that from the impact fees rather than not taking any funds from the general fund, correct?
Any other questions for Mr. Ingram?
I do have one, Mayor, for me. Uh, Mr. Ingram, the four point one eight, how, were there other close bids to that and did they include a, a no call?
There was one bid from Truist, uh, that if you look at the, uh, uh, the information that Davenport left, there was one from Truist that was four point one five, but it had a, a change in interest rate, it was a variable interest rate, and it was only for the first seven years, and it had call restrictions on it. So, um, I want to emphasize that that call restriction, no call restriction is important, very important. It allows us, because if we pay this debt early, if we have development come on board in the community and we can pay this debt off early, we're talking about significant interest savings. So, it was, uh, the other, uh, you asked, so let me, let me give you those actual numbers, bear with me just one second. We had a four point three, five percent, a four point four, six percent, and a five point three percent. Again, Truist came back at four point one, but it had a restriction and it changed. It was only for the first seven years, then it went to four point four, five percent. This is four point one eight percent for the total twenty years with no call restrictions. All the other ones had some type of call restriction on, whether it be for the first few years or if we exercised it, we made whole. There's, uh, there's a lot of, in those call restrictions that you have to make them whole, basically have to pay some interest on it, so.
Sounds like Sanovis places a high value on the partnership.
It was, it was honestly, Mr. Tolan, it was head and shoulders above all the rest, in my opinion.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Johnson?
Uh, Mr. Ingram, uh, can you state, just for the record, and I know we've already covered, uh, but the impact fees are completely dependent upon the development and no taxpayer dollars are going to be used to fund this project.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any further questions, comments? Mr. Roach?
Uh, if there's no further questions, I would like to make a motion. Louis, I appreciate it, I'll come see you tomorrow on that rate. I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental contract relating to the Canton Building Authority Revenue Bond Series twenty twenty-five for other related purposes.
Second.
The motion, and the second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. We have one item of new business, and that's discussion of twenty twenty-six council meeting calendar. Ms. Fortner?
Hello, good evening, everyone. Um, as you are aware, the council adopts, um, a meeting calendar each year. In your packet is the proposed twenty twenty-six meeting calendar. Um, I will note there is only one, um, date that coincides with a holiday, and that is the very first proposed meeting for New Year's Day. So, in your packet, I proposed, um, moving the first meeting of council in January, also known as the organizational meeting, to January eighth, which is the second Thursday, and then having the second council meeting on the twenty-second, which is the fourth Thursday. And that would be the only proposed change. All other meetings would be the first and third, as usually scheduled. Um, but I'm happy to ask your any questions.
Thank you, and, uh, I, I do believe there are five Thursdays in January, so
There are, so that we wouldn't have any meetings back.
Unless, uh, people want to not watch football and come to a council meeting, I believe that's a good solution. Any, any questions or comments?
One question, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Ms. Fortner, I'm assuming all of, none of the C C S D, um, vacation weeks are affected at all?
That's correct, and I also looked at, um, the G M A conference, because sometimes that starts, um, that same week. But that week, um, that conference is actually the very last week, and join us, move back a week.
Thank you, ma'am.
Make sure it can be as hot as possible in the city of Savannah for that conference, so.
Okay, great. Mr. Peppers?
Good evening, a couple of things I wanted to mention. First of all, our September, uh, team member of the month was, uh, Stephen Stargel, who is in our Public Works Department. We had the opportunity to recognize him at our, um, at our team huddles that we had, uh, earlier this month. And Stephen, Stephen's been with us a while, he, uh, actually got his C D L license with the city. Left us for a brief time to go to the private sector and came back because he loved the public service, uh, work that he got to do with the city. He's been with us a number of years now, and, uh, anybody who works with him will tell you he's got a good attitude. He is always, always volunteering for extra duties, always volunteering to be there when we have activities and events. And so, it was great to be able to recognize him. Also wanted to mention, uh, you know, we had, uh, a wonderful multicultural festival, uh, last week, great attendance, uh, at that event. It was moved back into October, and then it was moved to a nighttime event. Everybody who attended seemed to enjoy that a little bit better, it's a little cooler, uh, had a great soccer tournament, music, uh, uh, and things like that. Really, uh, wanted to give a shout out to, to Kelly and Lauren and, and Police Department, Public Works. It was a lot of people, Jackie, a lot of people on our team that worked to get that event going, uh, working with our, with our, uh, vendors. Appreciated the support of Georgia Power with a sponsorship, Pilgrim's always is the sponsor of that event, uh, Waste, Waste Pro as well. Bethany actually spoke, uh, to a STEM group last week, uh, a group of students at Cherokee High School, uh, girls that are interested in, uh, engineering. And so, she had an opportunity to speak on behalf of that profession to that group of young ladies and got great feedback from that. Jesse Hamilton, who's a lieutenant in our police department, graduated at the end of September from Leadership Cherokee, uh, we're so excited about that. Ondie Leslie, who is our Economic Development, uh, Manager, is completing the Young Game Changers Program this fall, which is with Georgia Ford and, and G M A. So, those are just a, a few staff shout-outs. Uh, some project updates for you, uh, we're currently working with, with Schneider and their vendors on our City Hall Solar Project. The contractors were on-site, uh, installing, uh, or moving the equipment upstairs, uh, last week, and then have started working on some installation, probably take us through the end of the month to complete the project. That project's paid for with sales tax dollar. What's interesting about that is when we receive our offset on electric costs, we, we receive that offset on our operational funds, which are our property tax dollars. So, our investment of capital funds from S P L O S T will help offset expenses on the property tax owner. And so, that's a good use of funds for the city, uh, and we do expect that to be paid back, uh, to, the return on investment to be around fifteen years. Uh, on the North Street project, we did have a, a project kickoff meeting, uh, last week with Goodwood Mills and K Wood, which is also the team that was selected by Cherokee County to handle their portion of the project. They had representatives from all areas of the project, from mechanical engineering and plumbing, landscape, uh, exterior design, mixed-use civil engineering. Their parking deck team was on-site. We had a discussion about timeline, had a discussion about the project site, goals of the project. Then we had a site visit, uh, where those individuals from across the southeast were able to come in and physically look at the site and have some conversations about the project. On the Canton Creek Pedestrian Bridge, we've already started working on some of the land out there, uh, the clearing for that particular project. The bridge probably will not be in until the middle of next year, just because of, of fabrication and things like that. But there's a lot of site work and things that we can be doing in that area. They're already starting to work on some of the relocation of, uh, utilities as well. Hickory Flat Highway and Marietta Road, Canton Village Shopping Center's been fully vacated, uh, along with the other two parcels that were purchased. We did get the bids back for demolition, and they had a range from about a hundred and fifty to about five hundred thousand dollars. One of the things that we're waiting on is to, uh, finish up the hazardous materials report in that building. We do know that there's some asbestos tile that'll have to be removed, trying to get that work, uh, scheduled before we award a bid on the demolition. In the meantime, while we're waiting on that phase, we do have our local law enforcement from our police department, the sheriff's department, also fire, are using the facility for training. It's great space for them to be able to get into and do some clearing and, 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 and different types of testing and work that they can do in that space. And so, if you notice any public safety in that area, it's probably related to training. T S P L O S T is one of the things that you'll see on the ballot this year. Uh, I will just make note to you that, uh, Cherokee County has information about the transportation, uh, sales tax on their website. Uh, it's located at CherokeeCountyGA.gov slash T S P L O S T. So, if you have any questions or any of your constituents have any questions, that kind of gives an overview of what the T S P L O S T is and the variety of projects, both at the county level and the city level, uh, on there also. Couple of revenue items I wanted to mention to you, uh, on S P L O S T, right now, we're about three percent over, um, up over year-to-date. The greatest swings in the S P L O S T for September, we're in manufacturing, which is up fifty-nine percent, construction's up fifty-five percent, home furnishings are down six percent. So, that, that's one that, that's trailing down this year. Also, the Downtown Development Authority received the, uh, twenty-five thousand dollar mortgage payment, um, before the end of the fiscal year from History Cherokee on their, uh, facility. Few leadership items, uh, I wanted to mention, we're working on, on getting a, a one-day city council retreat for December twelfth, uh, that would be hosted here locally, and we'll have more information on that in the, in the next couple of weeks. Last week, we had the opportunity to have our Team Canton Huddles. That's an opportunity for all of our staff to come together and talk about some things that are going on in the city, get some project updates, go over some, uh, personnel-related items, uh, also go over some leadership-related items, things that we talked about in that particular, uh, meeting with customer service. Talked about open records, training, compliance, we gave project updates. One thing that I am very excited about that launches in the first of November is a new leadership training series that our Human Resources Department's put on. We'll have a cohort that starts on November fifth. Those topics include personality profiling, understanding yourself, as well as differences in others, how to use your personality to lead, accountability versus responsibility, team building, of course, Human Resource one oh one, ethics and conduct, and then performance management. So, those are just a few things that we're working on here at the city, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Any questions for Mr. Pepper?
Yes, sir.
Johnson?
It's me again, I got one. Thank you so much for that report, uh, in regard to the multicultural event. Some, I just wanted to share a feedback that I got from a resident
Sure.
uh, just this morning. And if anybody hadn't been, it's a wonderful event. I've taken my kids, the face painting, the art, the cotton candy, the food. But what the resident stated was, hey, I asked a resident, well, how was this event? And they said, we enjoyed it, but something was missing. And I said, well, what was missing? They said the rest of the community. And I brought that up last year as well, uh, and it's kind of an us and them kind of event. So, I would be open to hear ideas that we can include all members of the community, uh, because there are people that are here, have been there their whole life, and they've still never been over there. So, I would just love to hear any ideas, uh, that anyone would have, uh, so that we could open this event up so that more people, uh, outside of just a particular group, uh, would attend that event, because it really is a wonderful event. So, certainly open to hear any ideas or suggestions, or wanted to view if you've heard any feedback in regards to that.
I didn't get any feedback like that at the, uh, particular event. What I did have at the event were a lot of people who had gone next door, the American Legion had hosted an event earlier that day, which was a barbecue event, who said, we just happened to be going by and saw this event, didn't know about it, stopped in, great event, we're not from the area. We appreciate that we were able to have barbecue earlier today, and now we get to try, you know, food from Peru tonight. We also had a lot of people that, that I got a chance to speak with who were visiting the event, uh, Canton residents. Uh, I talked with a number of people who were new to the area, uh, had a pretty good attendance from the south end of the county as well. But then, of course, you know, there were regulars that I see around town as well that attended. Most of the vendors were thrilled with the time, the location, uh, you know, we changed up the, the, the layout a little bit this year. We utilized both filled spaces, uh, we actually closed off the food until the event kicked off so that, you know, people weren't coming in before the event was kicked off and enjoying the food and overrunning the vendors. But certainly, you know, advertising and marketing's always one of those things. Charlie Ferguson Community Center had, uh, a tent there this year, and they were providing, uh, to the public as well. I got a chance to talk to them, and, and basically, they said, we'll be better prepared next year. We know a little bit more about what we're facing, so we'll, we'll be better prepared for that. But on the whole, everybody I talked with seemed to have a pretty good experience. You know, there, there were a couple of issues that we had at one point with parking, uh, just as the barbecue event was closing down and our event was opening up. We did have, uh, golf carts and we were shuttling people around. Some people don't want to wait on a golf cart, they start walking, it can be a little bit of a walk. But on the whole, uh, the feedback was good from those that I talked to, but we'll definitely take that into consideration.
Awesome, thank you, Ms. Peppers.
Thank you, I, I want to echo, it was a, it was a great event, and, uh, I heard numbers from someone, I've talked to so many people this week, but that, that numbers were up. It was the, the fifth year of the festival, so it's still, still kind of young and it's going, but I think people who certainly have discovered it, certainly enjoy it. But, uh, I heard that the numbers were, were up, Lauren, it's, it's giving me six percent? Six hundred more people than last year, so, yeah, that's, that's pretty good, so, uh, but it was, was a great event, so.
Anything else for Mr. Pepper?
Okay, we had no council introduced items, uh, just a couple of things. I was honored to, uh, present the Mayor's Cup Trophy for, uh, the Multicultural Festival, and so, I want to congratulate U P C I Canton Number One, the winning team. And I'll thank Mr. Tolan for helping out with the soccer tournament and helping out with the medal cer- ceremony, uh, last thing of the evening. I think lots of people had Last thing of the evening, I think lots of people had eaten and fled, but we were there and enjoyed it till the end. And again, thanks to Team Canton for all the work, and Chief Farrell helped me open the festival, and we shared a few good food items there, so it was a great event. The only other item I had, also had the privilege of attending and speaking at the groundbreaking ceremony for Medical Office Building Number Three at Cherokee Hospital Northside this morning. This will be a new office building, construction will begin, a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. That will continue to add to the Northside Cherokee Campus and provide increased enhanced health care benefits and access for our community. And Northside Cherokee has become a, you know, a regional powerhouse in healthcare. I heard this morning that the Northside Project, again, thinking the tower was only open in twenty seventeen. I had to check my numbers like three times, it seemed like it's been there a lot longer. But it's the largest healthcare project building in the state in the past decade, so it's continued to expand their services. We certainly appreciate Northside's investment in our community and in the health and well-being of our citizens. When we ever have new businesses or investments, looking at our city, they look at three things, you know, quality of education, quality of healthcare, and affordability. I think council's done a great job of cutting taxes to the lowest rate in our city's modern history. I'll repeat that as often as I need to. And certainly, our partners at Northside Cherokee and Cherokee County School District helps us out on the other two issues. So we appreciate the investments and look forward to that facility opening in Northside Cherokee. And my understanding is that the main tower, number two, will break ground on that in the spring of next year, so. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss litigation.
So moved.
Motion, the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay? We're adjourned, thank you, everyone.